We've got reverb still.
Is the laptop or anybody else here muted? I'm not sure why we're having a reverb, but we are. Oh, somebody over there. Is that better now? It is better now.
All right.
I'm testing a couple of different things up. Can I get a thumbs up from the people who are remote to if they can hear me all right? Give you a thumbs up? All right, if at any point you can't hear the people who are speaking, let us know and we'll make adjustments. And we have a...
That was it?
It's six o'clock. It's six o'clock and we have the three board members here. I see...
We need Joe.
I see Joe is there. I saw Mike earlier. I see Tom is on the list. Is Diamond there?
Yes, I'm here.
Can people still hear me remotely?
I can, but you're loud, so I don't know if it's on my end.
I'm not seeing Diamond on the list. And Joe, I'll leave it up to you if you want to...
I see her. I see, I can see Diamond. Wait, Diamond.
Can you hear me?
She is.
I think then that everybody's here, so Joe, if you want to get things started, I think we can go ahead.
All right, can everyone hear me? Yes. Okay, so we'll call to order...
Joe, your microphone is muted.
Not on my end, it's not.
I can hear good.
Little microphone bottom left.
I can hear Joe real good, so.
Nope.
I can hear you then.
Okay. It's unmuted on my end. Can everyone hear me? I can.
Let's try this. I turned it on in my mind. I think it's using my mass domain rather than using the extra one that we used, but I think that we can make this work. So why don't you go ahead, Joe?
Okay, we will call to order the special board meeting for the school district of Milton for April 1st, 2020. I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I'm going to wing it a little bit. Do we have any changes to our agenda, Mr. Diamond?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay, then we would look for a motion to approve the agenda as it is?
I'll move second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think it's valuable for us to do a little call votes for all of the votes just to make sure that we don't miss anybody.
Yeah, I was going to do that, Rich, with the exception of the agenda and adjournment. I thought those were inconsequential enough. So I heard enough consensus there. I'm going to call that motion passed that will approve the agenda. So let's move to the next item on the agenda, and I'm going to let the folks on site guide us through that, so.
Yeah, we will... The agenda title is discussion of possible action on continuation of employment and pay for all support staff employees during health emergency closure. And that's the only agenda item, so when we finish that item, we would be ready to adjourn. And there is information, a memo that went to the board that was part of that information, and I will highlight some of that. When I talk, I'm getting a lot of... And I've turned off, I've muted my mic here, but I want to make sure that people can still hear me. Remote people, can you hear me now? And it seems that's not, so.
Yeah.
I will... I will continue then and just highlight some things from that memo and kind of talk through the situation and then open it up to the board for questions, discussion, and a potential motion. If you recall, back in mid-March, there was an emergency order that was sent out from Governor Evers, and it talked about ending, closing all public and private schools in the state of Wisconsin for purposes of the pupil instruction and extracurricular activities. It started on Wednesday, March 18th at 5:00 PM, and then that original order was scheduled to end on April 5th, 2020. Since that time, back on March 17th, another emergency order was issued by the governor that extended that school closures until April 24th, 2020, or until a superseding order is issued. So now we're living under that guidelines from that latest emergency order. Initially, our response was to keep support staff whole during that health emergency. And by that, I mean that if we had been reopening on April 6th, we had identified enough work for all of our staff to do, not just the teachers and administrators, but also our hourly support staff, so that we could continue to pay them through schools starting back up on April 6th. With that closure extending, the situation now warrants board level discussion and possible action because of the extension through April 24th and potentially longer than April 24th. And our agenda item tonight is specific to our hourly staff. Our contract staff, teachers and administrators are continuing to work, although work looks a little bit different for everyone than it did a few weeks ago. We're continuing to provide services, academic services, support services for students and staff and families, providing meals for people, and that requires a lot of people to continue to work. So the idea is that our status as far as paying our teaching staff and our administrators hasn't changed from what it's been in the past. Those people are continuing to work. On any days that they would be working, they would continue to get paid as they normally would. With our support staff, and those include positions like clerical aides, library aides, instructional aides, special education and nurse aides, bookkeepers, custodians, administrative assistants, nutrition team staff, and information technology staff. The service roles of those people vary greatly in the amount of flexibility as far as who is required to work onsite, who is able to work offsite. And our initial plan, being just a couple of days before spring break and then one week this week coming back after spring break, included a lot of professional development work for staff who weren't able to work onsite and didn't have offsite work that they could do. But because of that extension now, we needed, we need to have the board approve steps moving forward. We do have a policy, policy number 4131. It's on reduction in staff, and it does give the board the right to reduce staff whenever circumstances warrant, but our administrative team is not recommending that option. We're recommending that the district continue to pay hourly staff their regular rate of pay if they're available to work and meet the work expectations either virtually or onsite as directed by their administration, and extending that through May 1st or the date of return, whichever of those things comes first. And if we find out in the meantime that the event of the closure gets extended beyond May 1st, the school board has meetings coming up on April 13th and April 27th where they would be able to address any issues that arose. Just a couple more things that I want to highlight from that and then answer any questions if people have is again, we are continuing to operate as a school district, and I think that's important to note. Teachers, administrators, and all staff continue to provide learning opportunities for students, meet students in family needs, again, serving lunches, maintaining and cleaning our buildings, and continuing our essential operations in areas like payroll and other business offices, making sure our bills get paid. Many people in this support staff group continue to work both onsite and offsite in their regular jobs. Some of these jobs are able to be completed offsite. Some require staff members to come onsite at times to complete their work. But people are working offsite whenever it's possible to do that. In that support staff group, we also have training, professional development opportunities for them to make all staff, to make those available to all staff as their available time allows. Some of them work full days, some of them just work part-time days in their regular work. Many aides of the aides and other support staff are helping to provide support to students, whether it's academic support, helping to provide meals to students, support for social, emotional learning, et cetera. And we know that we'll have times when we won't have work for all of this staff to do, but we'd like the board's agreement to pay them now and then anytime that we don't have work to fill their day. So for instance, if a person typically works four hours a day and we don't have four hours of work for them to do that day, they bank the number of hours that they work and we would have an expectation that that work would be performed at a later date once they're able to get that work done. Extending into the summer, many districts are using a waiver system to have staff sign off on the ability to do that. So if the board gives us the okay to do that, we'd be putting together documentation for staff to sign off on where they would agree to work hours at a later date in payment for the payment that they're getting now. It's kind of a pay now and work to work later system. But there is an expectation that the work would be performed for the hours that are paid. And the school year employees with that work goal could support summer school, summer learning opportunities, and perform other work as they were in the summer. That is something, again, that as we gather more information, we are uncertain as to the extent of the length of the school closure and of the health emergency. So putting this in place now allows us to plan for the next month through April 1st. As part of the recommended motion, it also would give myself the ability to act on behalf of the board if circumstances change. There's talk at the federal level about another stimulus package potentially coming up that may change the scenario. The governor may issue another emergency order that either extends the date where school is closed or potentially brings us back sooner than April 24th. And the recommended motion gives me the ability to respond as needed to address those different situations regarding staff and employment issues. And we're seeking board approval to offer the motion to allow payment borrowers work to be performed at a later date. So I'll read through that possible motion, and then we can discuss the information that I shared and answer any questions if anyone has. So the recommended possible motion is a move to provide for the continued employment and payment of support staff through May 1st of 2020 or the date of return, whichever comes first. Furthermore, the superintendent may act on behalf of the board with regard to payment, leave, and other employment matters that arise during health emergency. In the event the closure is expected to extend beyond May 1st, 2020, the board will revisit this recommendation at the April 27th, 2020 meeting. And this wouldn't, this motion wouldn't preclude the board from also revisiting it at our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 13th if the situation changed between now and now two. So questions, thoughts, comments from board members either here on site or from remote?
Rich, let's, rather than being redundant and restating it, I think if everyone was able to hear that, I would like someone to take that as a motion and give me a second.
Joe, can you repeat that?
Yeah, before we get any questions, let's get a motion on the table, and then we'll address questions and further dialogue if need be. So could someone move that the way that Rich articulated it?
I'll make a motion to provide for the continued employment and payment of all support staff through May 1st, 2020, or the date of return, whichever comes first. Furthermore, the superintendent may act on behalf of the board with regard to leave and other employment matters that arise during the health emergency. In the event the closure is expected to extend beyond May 1st, 2020, the board will revisit the recommendation at the April 27th, 2020 meeting.
I second.
Thank you. Motion from Karen, seconded by Brian. As you all heard, any other discussion on that motion? Questions for Rich or anyone else?
Rich, I have a question. Who is monitoring the time that's getting banked? Is that the supervisors and the managers, or is that the individual employee?
The individual employees, excuse me, I have to move there. The individual employee is working with their supervisor. Supervisors are the people who are monitoring the work, so they track both what work is being done and how much time it's taking for the staff member to do that.
And if an employee banks 80 hours and then they quit, what happens? But they got paid.
Could you repeat that question one more time, please?
So say an employee banks a bunch of hours because we don't have the work for them today, and then they quit. So they got paid by the school district for X amount of hours that they were intended to bank and use later, but then they quit their job. How does the school district recoup that?
I think that's a good question. I'm going to open, I'm going to answer just, I'm going to answer kind of in general, and then I'll let I know Chris Teague and Carrie Bradley are both on this call, too, so I'm going to share my thoughts a little bit in general on that, and then open it up to them. You might be able to provide a little bit more of the specifics. A part of that is a risk that we take. But we also want to, we want to make sure that we're doing two things, and there's kind of a continuum of how different districts are approaching this. Some districts have passed motions that say we're going to continue to pay staff, and they aren't tracking the work that they do and aren't even providing virtual learning opportunities for students. Other districts have taken a much more stringent approach to the extent of laying staff off when they're not needed and not paying staff at all. And we're looking at something that both keeps our staff whole, but also provides assurances that that work is getting done. And I think in general, if an employee is starting to bank large number of hours like that, and use the example of 80 hours, then we would want to have their supervisor work with them and identify things that they can be doing right now to be using down those hours. Some other things that we've talked about is we do have some of the people in this group have benefits eligible and have paid time off while others don't. And that's one of the things that Chris and Carrie are more the experts on that, and I and all of them speak a little bit to that topic. And we've talked about our ability and different ways that we can potentially recoup any payments that staff members would still owe us if we do. So I'm going to unmute mine and let Carrie Bradley and Chris Teague d'Or chime in with their thoughts on that, too.
I can speak from what we have done in the past. Can you guys hear me? Okay, sweet. I'll speak to what we've done in the past from the school district of Milton. We have watched very closely when we have employees that choose either 20 or 24 payrolls, and they have their compensation spread throughout a normal year. We work really closely with payroll to make sure that those individuals that are paid on 20 payrolls and they get close to running out of time off, and that will usually tie into the springtime, and then they quit. And then it's trying to make sure that we are very cautious on how many hours they've used, as well as tracking that. So we have a pretty good handle on it when it comes to day-to-day work. In this scenario, Carrie and I have talked with Rich already about it, and we will work even closer with payroll and the supervisors on how many of those hours are being banked. I can't guarantee that we're not going to have any of those situations happen, Diamond, but we're going to, we're very cognizant of them potentially happening and going to be watching them.
Chris, how many employees, how many employees are we talking about approximately?
For the support staff?
Yeah.
I think on, we were talking earlier, there's about 200 employees underneath the support staff category. And that's any of a range from working an hour a day all the way up to an eight-hour day. And then our benefit hours would start at six hours a day.
And do we know currently how many of those employees are not able to perform any function of their job duties?
We have identified groups on a spreadsheet that Carrie and Rich and I have worked on that outlines those employees that have less consistent work than other employee groups. So those are the employees that we are watching closely and working with their supervisors on maintaining and keeping an eye on those hours.
Okay.
And I can, I can see that Carrie Bradley was going to add something to it. She looks like she was going to add something to that, so I'll ask Carrie, can you add your thoughts on that, too? Carrie, hold on a second. We're getting a lot of feedback here. Is your laptop muted on your end? We are not able to, we're not able to hear you. Carrie Bradley, we're not able to hear you at all. And we lost, we lost Carrie Bradley's picture, and we weren't able to hear her either, so I think we'll just continue. We will continue, and if she comes back online, we'll see what she was going to add to that.
So do we have an idea? I know you said you identified them by groups. Do we have an estimated percentage of that 200? How many were concerned about not being able to fulfill those hours?
I think in general, from our discussion, it seemed to us that approximately 75 of those 200 would be able to just continue with their typical work, whether it's onsite or offsite, be able to continue with their typical job duties, which for that, if it's 75 out of the 200, is about 37% or so would be able to continue to work. That doesn't mean that the others wouldn't have things that they could do. We have a large number of staff members who could be working, that a lot of our aides can be working with the teachers that they typically work with, but working remotely to help design lessons, to provide additional support for students. One of the things that we're hearing is that we have some students who are struggling a little bit with the virtual learning, which is not a surprise because it can be difficult. Motivation factors sometimes can be difficult. Organization when you're on your own can be difficult. So we're looking at ways to incorporate our instructional aides and our classroom professionals to be able to provide some one-on-one, small group support for students that need it, too. And I think that will definitely increase the number of people who are able to continue in something close to their regular job. We also are looking, if we are allowed to come back in summer and have, what we'd like to have is an extension to the summer school program to get people caught out on anything important standards that we missed during the school year during the last couple of months here. And we would like to be able to bring in support staff to be able to help with that summer school work, too. And that's one of the ways that banking hours would help. And also with moving some of our classrooms as we are moving into some new classroom space in our elementary schools for the start of next year. Bringing in additional help to move classroom furniture and classroom materials would be beneficial, too.
I don't want to capitalize on everyone, but I have one more question. At our HR meeting, I brought it up, and I don't know if Carrie Barrett or Carrie has been able to get back on, but I've had a lot of people in the community ask me specifically about what we're doing with support staff. As you can imagine, a lot of people have different opinions on it, but one of the overlying questions they keep getting is why are we not laying people off and allowing them to collect unemployment, especially with the bills that have passed and the additional funds that those on unemployment get that sometimes it would be more beneficial for our staff members to collect those benefits. Carrie, it's kind of started to explain her thoughts on it at our meeting, but said that she was going to look further into it to have that information for today because I believe that there's going to be people that are asking specifically about that.
And I guess I got a text message from Carrie Bradley that related to the first question about if someone decides to leave the school district and they lost some time. And it ties into, partially into what we talked about already, but one piece that she had shared that I don't think we went into is that the waiver that we would have staff members sign would cover that. We would have expectations built into that that require any unpaid work to be paid back if they do decide to leave the district. And then on the second question that Diamond had about the CARES Act that came out on Friday, we don't want to get in the way of, if staff members feel that their financial situation would be best if they no longer work for the school district and they go on unemployment, we certainly would work with them to make that happen. We're waiting on a little bit more specific details on how that would work. We've heard bits and pieces of the federal legislation that came out last week, but we want to make sure that we have that really ironed out. And this motion tonight wouldn't preclude us from moving in that direction. I think that's tied into the responsibilities that the board would give to the superintendent to be able to make adjustments in that way if we have information and if we're hearing from staff members that they would like to take advantage of that.
One question I have, if someone banks quite a few hours and then they're working it off in the summer, but I think if they're looking at their responsibilities financially, they got to pay bills every month. You know, it's just pushing that off till later. You know, it's not really, you know, if you can't find work for them, you know, and some of them just don't feel comfortable coming into the school buildings right now if they have a sick relative or something that they're close to or something. They don't want to be around anyone, you know, and so I guess I, there's more comment, I guess, and it'd be a question, but.
And those are important points that Mike raised, too. That's a good question and some good points there. By continuing to pay staff now, even if the work would be available for them in the summer, it does allow them to continue to meet their financial requirements now. They don't have to look for other work. They don't have to worry about their family missing any bill payments that they have. They're still able to support local businesses because they still have their paychecks coming in. And, and so I think that that does detail that. And we also are working with any staff members who have concerns about if, if there is work that needs to be done onsite and they don't feel comfortable doing that, we're doing a couple of different things. We're doing everything possible to make sure our people that are working onsite are maintaining social distancing and following all of the different guidelines that are out there. But also if someone does not feel that they can come in and do work, and it is work that's required, we're working with them individually on how to best meet that situation, too. So, we're, we're alert to those concerns that people have, and we've been addressing those with individual staff members as they've come up.
One other question, this is for you, Rich. It's not in the motion, but what about the coaches for spring sports? You know, it doesn't look like we're gonna be doing spring sports, but then I hear they're still being paid and working with the kids. What, what's the status of that?
Yeah, and that's another good question. As of right now, the spring, center of spring sports has, has started before spring playoffs. And we do know that our, especially our varsity coaches, a lot of the work that they do doesn't just start the day that students show up. There's a lot of work that goes in to preparing for those things. This information from the, this motion from the board doesn't address coaches or advisors of, of clubs or any other positions like that. But the way that we'd like to move forward with that is to, we have a meeting set up for tomorrow to meet with the high school and middle school principals and activities directors to make sure we're identifying who all of those people are, and that it's not just the coaches, but it's different clubs and activities. Some of them have been meeting earlier in the year but aren't meeting now. Some of them are just starting up in the spring. But many of them are, are groups that, that the advisor has already been working on. So, I personally think that it's, it's fair for us to continue to provide compensation for these people, but ask them to continue to work, whether it's providing, some of them have, many of them have been providing individual training information out to the athletes on their teams. If it's a club like National Honor Society, or the Spring Play, or different groups like that, a lot of work has gone into those different things already. And continuing to stay in touch with those students and giving them updates so that students aren't doing just the academic piece is valuable for students. But there isn't anything in the motion that would require you to continue to pay those people. There isn't anything in the motion that would keep us from being able to continue to pay those people. I think that would fall under the category of giving me the leadway, leadway to work with our other administrators and our activities and athletic directors, and make a determined notion into how we can best utilize those people moving forward. I see that Carrie Bradley visually is back on, and she's waiting, so we'll see if we can hear her better this time.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that sounds great, Carrie. And we have her, and then the feedback.
All right, I will try and talk more softly so you don't get so much feedback. I apologize. When data questions came up, I went to plug in my second monitor, and that kind of destroyed everything for me. So, back on laptop, and I was disconnected for a while. But one of the things I was looking for data for had to do with Diamond's question and the number of staff that we are talking about. Were you able to cover that without me, or do you want me to hit on a couple of points?
Yeah, I think we talked about that while we were offline, Carrie.
Okay.
If anyone has additional questions about that, feel free to ask.
The only comment, then, if there's no questions I would like to add, is many of the people that we're talking about in the instructional aid group do not work eight-hour days. So, just, so you're aware that when we're working on accumulating hours, a lot of those people do not work an eight-hour day. I don't know if that is helpful or not. And, and then just to reiterate, as Rich had said when he started, really, this is a, a short term to get us to May 1st, and, and then give us a chance to continue evaluating new things as they become available.
I would, I would like to, I would like to kind of echo what Diamond said, that with the, the possibility of unemployment, this motion, I agree, would, if something should come up where we get a clear picture on unemployment and the laws that go along with it, I believe we should look at whichever is best for our employee and give them the option. You know, I'm looking back at our district mission and vision statement, and one of the strategic objectives is to recruit, develop, and retain highly effective staff. And that doesn't just mean teachers, that means support staff and everybody else. So, I would be in favor of this motion with the idea that we should keep a close eye on the unemployment options once we get a clear picture of what that entails.
I guess my only comment related to that is what you need to understand it, and I just realize, because it's something that I am personally faced with. God, my husband is going back to work on April 6th. As long as they remain district employees and are employed, they will have health insurance benefits. What are we gonna do if they, if we decide to lay these people off? There goes their health insurance. So, now, so now you've got an employee that not only not making what they are accustomed to making and able to live off of, because unemployment will not equal their salary. You also have an employee now that has faced healthcare and having to pay those bills. My, you know, I, like everybody else, I don't want somebody to get paid and not have to work for it, but this is salaries that we've already put into our budget. It's not like we're having to rebudget more money for these individuals or figure out how we're going to pay them. We've already figured in their salaries for the year. I do believe that our staff realize that. I am, you know, fairly optimistic in thinking that none of our staff are going to do that. But I think those are things that we also need to take into consideration. This is, you know, as everybody has said, this is unprecedented times, and, you know, this is a daily, hourly, evolving situation. So, you know, I think at this point, we go with what we have till May 1st, and then, as Rich has said, you know, we can always revisit it at our meeting on April 27th, or even into May if this goes past May 1st. But I do think these are some hard, tough questions that we as a board in the district need to look at.
Does anybody else have any comments, questions, or concerns about the motion on the floor? Let me share just a couple of pieces. I had a lengthy conversation with Shayna Lewis this morning about all of the points that, that folks have covered. There are lots of pieces to that CARES Act that they passed on Friday that address some of the issues that we are talking about right now. There is a specific provision in there, and I do not know the details that addresses what we can do for health insurance for folks that are, Shayna shared the buzzword for the industry right now is furloughed. If you are furloughed from your job as a school district employee, you become eligible for the unemployment side of things, but there is also a provision that addresses the health insurance. So, I, I think we're, there will be ways to address that or, or things that we can do or that will get done for those folks. So, you know, it's, it's a very relevant discussion about each individual situation and whether that person is better in the unemployment side of things or working for the district or whatever. And that may, that may change depending on the length of this particular time period. But I think in, in the simplistic version of the motion, it gives us the ability to do what we need and probably want to do in the month, give or take, until we get a chance to learn more and find out more of the detail. And then if we needed to take different action, I think we could. So, my, my personal take is this is a good, good direction for us to go and, and still gives us flexibility to change course if, in fact, it's not exactly what we need. And unless anyone wants further comment or question, I'm gonna call the vote. And I'm gonna do this by roll call. So, I'll, I'll beg your pardon for any kind of pauses, but in no particular order. Tom Wester, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, vote on the motion?
Yes.
Tom is yes. Diamond?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Is yes. I'll do myself next, as if I were in the middle, and I am yes. And then the folks onsite, I'll do Karen?
Yes.
Is a yes. Rick?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Brian?
Yes.
Is a yes. That is a seven-zero vote. I will call that motion passed. And thank you for everyone weighing in. It's certainly a challenging time, but I think we're, we're doing the right thing by our folks. So, I believe that's the only agenda item, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Rich?
That is the only agenda item. What I'll do to follow up is send an email out to all of our staff members, providing direction on what the board just approved, letting them know that it allows us to remain flexible as we learn more in the upcoming weeks. And that will revisit that in upcoming school board meetings.
Rich, with Joe adding that information at the very end with Shayna, can, do you think it'd be possible to pull together more of that information for our board meeting next week? Just so we all have a better understanding of what Joe's conversation was with Shayna and what potential options would be later?
We will, yeah, put together a packet of information for the board.
Thank you.
So, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just had one more thing. Would like to just politely remind everyone to continue checking your emails and, and electronic communications. That's gonna be very, very critical for us going forward. We won't have much face-to-face interaction, for sure. So, please, please check your emails and, and use that format to share information back and forth. And if we do that, I'm sure we'll all stay on the same page and, and have access to everything that we need. So, if there's nothing else question-wise from folks, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Stay safe. We'll see you soon.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you all.
I know, I know. I know your opinion. I feel like it should be a little sign that says it's not COVID. It's just, it's just happening.